Good evening. Today is Wednesday, July thirteenth. And I am calling this meeting of the McColl County Board of Trustees to order. I'll say the word.
The people who are like United States of America and the government of British citizens on the mission under God.
Proposal, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Kuzma.
Here.
Trustee Lucio.
Here.
Trustee Oliver.
Here.
Trustee Nevers.
Present.
Treasurer Dole.
Here.
Proposal here. Supervisor Vivian.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. We have the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, additions or corrections? Motion to approve. Support. Any discussion? Motion with other votes for my trustee to approve the agenda. Motion carries the names. Moving on to approval of the bill run. So motion, most to approve. Point. Any discussion on the vote?
Mr. Chairman, a couple of questions.
Sure.
I had asked for an update regarding the litigation standards on the sorting matter.
Yes.
Is it anticipated that there will be such an update? That was the only issue, sixteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-six thousand fifty-two cents on this floor.
Yes, Mr. Eli. I mentioned to him he's fine doing it. We just have to schedule it. She's going to be in my office tomorrow.
Alright, thank you. That's, that's all I had.
Okay. So, motion by trying to do the last part by trustee Nevers to approve the vote on. And we should be so. Motion passes the name. Uh, moving on to approval of the previous meeting's minutes from June twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. To approve. Or. A discussion on the previous meeting's minutes. Motion by those part of the trust to approve the previous meeting's minutes. Numbers please vote. Motion passes the name. Moving on to public comments. If you have agenda items only, anyone who wishes to speak, please make your way with the microphone. Right inside of the room. Anyone who is participating remotely, please digitally raise your hand. Is anybody present? At least anybody digital.
No, sir.
There is no panel. We will move on to the consent agenda. Sir, motion? Chairman, would you really consent to change the entire support? A discussion on the consent of others.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question regarding the. Item, gender, item eight. Chief available?
Yes.
Have you been chief? Question I had was, how old is this vehicle? That was involved with the repairs, ten, over ten thousand dollars.
Uh, two thousand and seven.
Okay, and uh, is there any other vehicles that are similarly situated? Because I noticed. The uh, the parent voice mentioned that there was a uh. A wrong radiator cap that was placed on the. Vehicle and that that could account for the loss of fuel.
Right, yes.
Uh, at one point did they determine the interior radiator being replaced?
Uh, once they, we said, uh, to get an estimate, they had to completely remove it, find out what had to be taken care of. And it was determined at that point that it had to be replaced, contacted supervisor, supervisor, informed him of the situation and. The cost to repair.
I understand that this is a very, you know, community reviews, it's a very professional organization. Is there any standard operating procedure to bring a vehicle similarly situated into? This particular repair facility or to explain why or what made you choose that?
Uh, because the uh, actual engine is a common engine, so it was taken to the closest common dealer with a repair.
Okay.
And uh. Is there another vehicle that's aging at the same rate as this one or is this pretty much standalone unit?
I notice, uh, engine four is identical to this one, the same age they were purchased together. So it's actually engaged roughly the same hours.
And did the overheating uh, affect the ability of the fire department to provide for the safety, health and welfare of the township? Or was it something that just was a chronic problem that allowed vehicles still be in service?
No, I was returning from a call when the warning lights came on for the temperature gauge. So it was taken out of service immediately and on the Monday morning, we contacted the common dealer, got it down there for. An estimate to look at to see what the problem was. And at no time was uh, there any threat it was replaced with station one, so the light truck was moved into this place.
Are you, are you satisfied that this vehicle is uh, a hundred percent reliable, reliable to people in the township?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Any more discussion on the vote? Okay, you have a motion by Treasury Justice Department of Justice members to approve the consent agenda. Motion passes the name. Alright, we're moving on to new business. Item nine is a request to establish the continuation of the existing water rates and sewer rates through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Chair, I move that we uh, continue the existing water and sewer rates with a zero percent increase through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. Support. Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, board. Let me bring this to your attention um. To continue the existing water rates through a few items. Number one was U F S completed their water rate study. And uh, it was done by Don Lund and they recommended, you know, one more year, it would be comfortable with no water increase. And the D P W was comfortable with that determination. Uh, number two, capital project delays, obviously with the economic conditions delaying projects, just delaying us spending some money. So it also kind of contributed to this uh, decision. And as well as Highland Park, so the Great Lakes Water increase, um, our increase are passed along from this year will be six hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars. Um, that's over my a hundred and seventy-six thousand, so it was eight hundred, you know, eight hundred and thirty thousand, so reduced because they pulled Highland Park. Debt from our, our invoices, so we'd not be seeing any debt paid, Highland Park debt paid for any invoices we received from Great Lakes Water. So with those three things, uh, we recommend this and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So Mr. Board voted uh, a few months back that we would withhold any payment to Great Lakes Water Authority debt. That we're going to be directed toward paying off Highland Park's, paying for Highland Park's debt. Uh, and we directed when we start that in this July. So uh, Kevin, you're saying that this one title, Great Lakes Water Authority will not be assessing any part of the inquiries that would go to Highland Park at this time?
Right.
Thank you. You had questions, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, Mr. Johnson, uh, you were having a discussion before I realized I'd read the folder. It had to run out to go back to my home and come back. I understand from my conversation with you earlier before the meeting, the methodology of the assessment of water for. The municipalities being worked on by a group of individuals. Could you tell me, township, what you're involved in in that?
Yeah, correct. So uh, I am the uh, McColl County co-chair for the Great Lakes Water Authority Outreach Program. Uh, that my role is to help with McColl County communities, get information out from Great Lakes, that I will commit meetings, so I disseminate information. On top of that, I chose to be a part of the reviewing of the methodology that Great Lakes uses to invoice all communities. So you know, use like Max Day, Geek Hour, distance elevation, all those things that'll make your eye roll back in your head. But uh, it's kind of really taking a look at all those informations, is it the right way to build communities, it's the fairest way for all communities. There's twenty-nine different individuals that are all member partners or communities are not related to Great Lakes Water Authority. And we're deciding on what makes the most sense on how to build each other efficiently and effectively. So Great Lakes has been part of it so much, they're kind of listening to us, but the communities are deciding what we think is the fairest way to build all of us as a whole. And so I'm a part of that group to kind of help determine what that's going to be. That's going to be a year and a half process. It's going to, the goal is to have a decision by November of twenty twenty-three, so it's not a simple solution.
So in other words, there's other methodologies out there, Great Lakes Water Authority's methodology, current methodology, it's not. The only pathway to uh, efficient and uh. And accessible water supply. Is that fair statement?
I would say the methodology is very detailed and it's, I'm not saying it's not fair at all, we're determining if this or that, but we're going to reach out to other authorities to see, you know, get their feedback. And we're going to determine what, if there's not methodologies, what does make sense, what doesn't. Run the game and that, everyone's ideas of what we're all going on homework, we're reaching out, I'm reaching out to communities in California, Colorado, to see. I can get their communications, see what they do, how they do stuff. I'll just get ideas out there about what makes more sense.
Well, I want to personally thank you for your work in that regard. Mr. Chairman, I have one question for. To the Chair, General Counsel. Uh. I mentioned earlier about this cost of service issue and whether or not we should pay under protest. But given the most recent case that I've read from the Court of Appeals, it seemed to that. Be a very productive pathway. So my question to General Counsel is, do we have anything to lose by? Paying or sending a letter saying we're paying any protests?
You have nothing to lose. I mean, there's nothing bad. They're not going to penalize you for doing such, but if we don't pay, then there's obviously a contractual ramifications potential.
Oh, I understand that.
Yeah, but that's not what you're suggesting.
No, I'm not suggesting that at this time. Um. Again, to the Chair and General Counsel, if we ever did reach an impasse with the rates. When we didn't want to pass on the rates and accumulate deficit spending in regards to water. Uh. What do you believe would be the ramifications of that failing compared with all payments?
I'd have to look at the contract and I'd be heading out, but. Till then.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have other questions.
Thank you, Justice Goodenham. Any other discussion relating to the establishment of water rates for the next year?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to amend the. Payment of the water, both Great Lakes Water Authority with the provides element that's being paid under protest. It's subject to review by the courts.
I guess I would ask is then appropriate amendments, this, this motion is for establishing water rates for our customers, not for the payment. Maybe, maybe you should make a separate motion.
Okay, I doubt it. I would try the motion on that.
And. The other discussion on this motion. Motion by Judge Joel, it's part of my trust to the studio to approve. Um, the continuation of the existing water rates to be a zero percent increase in sewer rates from June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. Numbers please vote. I'm sorry. Uh, proposing the vote.
Treasurer Dole.
Yes.
Trustee Lucio.
Yes.
Trustee Kuzma.
Yes.
Trustee Oliver.
Yes.
Trustee Nevers.
Yes.
Proposal, yes. Supervisor Vivian.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move then the agenda concluding of the agenda item nine, eight, which is the motion that the. Upon making payments, Great Lakes Water Authority instructed General Counsel to, to the supervisor's office to pay under protest, subject to review by the courts. Is there a second to that motion?
Mr. Chairman, entertain the motion, but I'm afraid I don't understand it fully. I'm not sure. I'm testing. What, um, you know, it's like.
The protest would be that the cost of service methodology is, is not accurately reflecting cost of service to Great Lakes Water Authority. To build to municipality. Township.
Can I ask one question of Stacy before we, Stacy, when will the next payment be due to Great Lakes Water Authority?
Uh, should, there's a month, so probably by the end of July.
Would we have enough time in the next meeting to address this issue before the payment?
Uh, I'd have to double check with the due date, but probably, given we're checking back. Screen table this.
That was probably.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to watch this.
Maybe something in terms of what, what's specific room? Yes, it goes to the microphone, Stacy. I'd actually feel more comfortable about that as well, so that I'm doing very, what's your comment, I was getting, to make sure we're on the same page.
So the July bill we will receive um, in August, so we would have time in the next July bill, or I'm sorry, board meeting, if need be.
So I propose this, um. If you agree, if you withdraw the motion for now, send me an email, put it on the next agenda, it's your explanation. And we're typically look at it, Stacy gives the due dates and we'll have a different item.
I agree with that. That's the solution. I would draw the motion. And to turn the agenda, I would draw underlying motion. Action item.
Thank you, Justice Goodenham. Alright, who gets item ten? Uh, request for permission to execute cross treaty agreement for the construction cost of the common car road for twenty-three mile road widening. And the widening, reconstruction and widening project to Romeo Lane and Heinrich. Amount is one million, two hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-four thousand. Is there a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman. Trustee, response, points, motion.
Mr. Van Tiffel. Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members, uh, this is a budget agreement for the last phase of the construction portion of the charter. Uh, last year, the township board approved the third phase uh, of the, of the right widening twenty-three mile road. The county has chose to bid and construct the two phases together, so essentially from car road all the way to Romeo Lane. Built starting this year and will be counted into next year. Uh, this would complete our obligation to this project, we think, and again, you know, what it comes up with, you know, during construction. But uh, the amount, one point, I'm sorry, one million, two hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars in zero cents. Uh, has been reviewed by our engineering group and we're recommending approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiffel. Any questions or discussion? And we have motion by trustee Oliver, it's part of my trustee Kuzma. I see the cost sharing agreement for the widening twenty-three mile road. Okay, please vote. Motion passes the name. Next item is a request uh, for permission to execute cross treaty agreement for the additional design and right of way costs of common car roads. For the car field road extension from twenty-two all the way to twenty-five mile road. Additional cost is two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. Is there a motion? Motion to approve. Support. Mr. Van Tiffel.
Mr. Chairman, board members, um, back in two thousand and eighteen, the township board approved a cost share agreement for the entire three mile stretch of our field that is uh, has not been completed. Um, with the cost going up and these engineering costs being associated with a percentage of construction. Um, the county has adjusted the amount that the township's portion would be for uh, this uh, stretch. At the last meeting, the township board approved the cost share agreement from southern twenty-five, I'm sorry, twenty-four mile up to twenty-five mile. Um, this would get all of the design work done for the balance of the, of the project from twenty-two all the way to twenty-four mile road. So with, with that, uh, we're recommending uh, the approval of the additional uh, cost of two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiffel. Questions or discussion? Motion by clerk Posey, it's part of my trust to the studio, I see the cost sharing agreement on common department roads for the design work for the car field road extension. Uh, two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. Can you just be so? Motion passes unanimous. Next item is a request to award geotechnical engineering and material testing services contract. It's a motion. So. Okay. Mr. Van Tiffel.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members, on two twenty-first, the township received proposals for geotechnical and material testing services for all of our projects. Uh, whether they're waters or sidewalk gap program, uh, anything the township is doing, we need these services, we would have a engineering consultant available to us. So uh, those proposals were issued by um, Crystal and I in the engineering department, as well as our two engineering consultants, we went through them. Uh, both of the consultants that submitted proposals we have used before were very familiar with. Um, however, the committee decided on Intertech PSI as who we are going to recommend for three-year contract for the possible two-year uh, extension at the end for a total of five. We decided they were happy with them, so we're recommending approval.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiffel. Questions?
I have one, Mr. Chairman. So this one that we selected, we don't have an experience with, or?
We, we do.
This one you do.
Yeah, we received two proposals and both of them, we've had a lot of experience with, you know, satisfied with both, but this one's worth a little bit higher and so this is the way we're going to help.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Thank you. Um. Were both bidders qualified?
Yes.
Was the selection of the committee. Always qualified bidder?
That starts with cost. I would say yes.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Justice Goodenham. Bye. Any other discussion or questions? Trust, motion by Judge Joel, supported by clerk Posey to award the geotechnical services, engineering, geotechnical engineering and material testing services contract. Members please vote. Motion passes the name. Next item is a request to update our residential road improvement project participation policy. Motion. So. Support. Mr. Van Tiffel.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members, last year, the township board approved a policy with regard to participating in the reconstruction of the residential streets that, you know. Chelsea Court being the, the first one, or Chelsea Park being the first one that, that we've done with the county. Um, the, the new county uh, policy on this has come out, they have changed a few of their dates. Uh, the primary one being when the application is due. Uh, last year, it was due on September sixth, now it's been moved out to mid-September. So that means that we need to get our stuff into them for the petition back from the, the petitioner for the S A D earlier. So we moved that, that data uh, uh, to August fifteenth. And nothing else really changed in the policy, we just wanted to make, make sure that we were in line with what the county uh, policy is, so we're recommending.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiffel. Questions or discussion?
Just one quick question, yes. Do you think this at all makes it more difficult for these subdivisions and. That extra month that means that you need to get new signatures and all, or percentage of signatures and all that?
So far, our experience has been very good with these, they've gotten these petitions back to us very quickly. But when we put this policy together, we gave ourselves a lot of, of extra time in, in, in the schedule. So I don't see this as an issue. The county may continue to move this up because. The, the timing that they're bidding this is a little bit late in the season, but um, that'll be their, their decision, we'll adjust accordingly. We have to go and, you know, move everything back and we will.
Thank you. Any other questions? Motion by Judge Joel, it's part of my trust to the studio to update the residential road improvement project participation policy. Members please vote. Motion passes the name. Next item is a request on hiring young clerk. Is there a motion? So. For. Mr. Vaga.
Mr. Supervisor and board members, I'm requesting authorization to, to extend an offer from employment to Elizabeth Malpary, the accounting clerk position. This position was posted compliant with the M A C B A agreement. The H R department received over twenty applications for the position. Seven were interviewed by myself, Stacy Smith and Amy Cutiras. If approved, it's contingent upon successful completion of all post offer requirements. And we're looking at an effective date around the first week of August. This is a budgeted position. Thank you for your consideration and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Vaga. Any discussion or questions? You're now moving to motion by clerk Posey, it's part of my trustee Oliver, hire Elizabeth Malpary, the accounting clerk position. Members please vote. Motion passes the name. Congratulations to Elizabeth. Moving on to item fifteen, is a request to approve a broadcast media letter of understanding. Motion to approve. Support. Mr. Vaga.
Mr. Supervisor and board members, the board proceeded to approve the twenty-twenty-three fiscal year budget at the June eighth, twenty-twenty-two board meeting. Part of the budget included a substantial reduction to the broadcast media budget due to the department's reduced responsibilities. Those reductions resolved only on two employees represented by me. Negotiating the reduced responsibilities of me representatives into the way of possible prolonged grievance process, both McColl Township and me. Which is an agreement that is represented by the attached letter of understanding. Again, thank you for your consideration and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Vaga. Any questions or discussion? Motion by Judge Joel, it's part of my trust to the studio to approve the broadcast media letter of understanding. Members please vote. Motion passes the name. Next item is a request to approve a treasury letter of understanding. Is there a motion? Someone support. Mr. Vaga.
Mr. Supervisor and board members, the treasurer has requested creation of two classifications specialized provide accounting services within treasurer's department. The M A C B A provides for the creation and compensation classifications. We are requesting to prove the classification of, classifications of treasurer accounting clerk and lead treasurer accounting clerk. If approved, the two classifications shall be established into the M A C B A. These two classifications would take effect retro back to July first, twenty twenty-two. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Vaga. Chair, just clarify, we're not creating two new positions that we're hiring for, we are reclassifying existing positions that we have. To better reflect the actual needs of the current, previous classifications that have been updated since they've updated to the classification. So don't want to think we're adding new people. Just reclassifying what's we have. Thank you, Attorney Todd. Any other discussion or question? Okay, motion by clerk Posey, it's part of my trust to the law to approve the treasury letter of understanding. Members please vote. Motion passes the name. Moving on to item seventeen, we have a request to purchase equipment for the boardroom, for boardroom technology upgrades from the C D W G. Um, the amount of. The amount of twelve thousand one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and three cents with C D E G funds. Motion. So. Or.
Spock. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board. This past spring, we did apply for a number of community development block grant opportunities. These were funds that were not part of the regular block grant opportunities, but had to do with extra funding that they had unspent from previous years due to the COVID pandemic, and so they allowed the communities to resubmit more opportunities. Items had to be associated with pandemics in general and health and welfare in general. And so one of those opportunities for us was to get some upgrades for technology here in the boardroom. Those include things like updated cameras, those who are watching via Zoom. I don't know if you have had the chance to watch those Zoom meetings back, the camera that we're using can be a little blurry. So that amongst some of the upgrades that we're seeking. This, as it says in your agenda, this is something that we purchased initially in the block grant funding and then reimburses for.
Thank you, Mr. Spock. Any questions or discussion? And motion by Judge Oliver, supported by Judge Lucino, to approve the purchase of equipment for the boardroom technology upgrades from C D W G, the amount of twelve thousand one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and three cents, C D E G funds, members please vote. Motion passes unanimously. We got item eighteen. Request to approve both amendments to the home town to court ordinances, chapter seventeen, land division regulations. Motion. So. Spock.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board. The next, this item as well as the next one are similar in nature. We are updating the ordinance overall, and recall the whole ordinance. This is one item, though, that we wanted to tackle quickly. It's probably the most common variance request we see at the zoning board, having to do with lot sizes. State of Michigan allows four-to-one ratio for width versus depth of parcels. Our current ordinance is three-to-one. As I mentioned, we get a lot of variance requests for these, so we are attempting to mirror the state's limit of four-to-one. And because we've had so many, we wanted to get this accomplished, even though we're updating the whole ordinance, we want to get on top of it and update this, so. This this item has to do with code of ordinance, following items, the zoning ordinance, but they reflect each other, so they're both for you this year. Thank you, Mr. Spock.
Chair.
Yes. To you too, Mr. Spock. This is a fixed ratio of the lot size, doesn't necessarily affect density.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Motion by Judge Alonzo, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the amendments in the hometown to court ordinances, chapter seventeen, land division regulations, members please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item nineteen is a request to approve proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance. So. Spock.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board, as I mentioned, this is in line with previous item. This is for the zoning ordinance, though, there are a number of locations within the zoning ordinance. Those items are in your packet, where in reference to three-to-one. At this time, we're only updating the residential zoning parcels to the four-to-one ratio. We'll look at the rest as we continue to update the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Spock. Any questions? Session? Motion by Judge Alonzo, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the amendments to the zoning ordinance. Members please vote. Motion passes unanimously. We have item twenty is a request to approve the planning commission statement. Motion to approve. Support. Spock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. The township currently provides a payment for both zoning board and planning commission numbers for their services. They review, you know, a number of items in their packet, as well as ten meetings, often do site visits. The zoning board currently gets a hundred and fifty dollars per meeting attended. Planning commission is a hundred and twenty-five dollar per meeting attended. It was actually approved in last year's budget to up the planning commission fee to a hundred and fifty dollars per meeting. But that never actually took place, so it was pre-approved in this year's budget, so we're just trying to bring them in line with one another.
Thank you, Mr. Spock. Any questions? Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions, sir. I need some searches on my own database, trying to find the word stipend. And I could not find it, so I looked at a hundred and fifty dollars, couldn't find it in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. Someone telling me when the C B A stipend was increased or set at one fifty. If anyone knows.
Stacy, do you remember how far back that goes?
No, I kept researching.
Charlie? I didn't, but I, you know, but I can't tell you, I don't. I think it, I think it's fourteen. I was gonna say, Stacy, I did some research on planning stipend, and it was actually always been a hundred and twenty-five, but they had a salary attached to it, right?
Right.
And in fourteen, the salary that was wiped out. And my understanding, there was some political motivation and all that.
Mr. Chairman, I think I wrong, Charlie, once the planning mission at one fifty, it was reduced to one twenty-five?
No, it was more than that, it was more than that. What did we figure it out, sixty, like a hundred and seventy-eight dollars per meeting and average dollars per meeting, the salary?
Correct.
And it got wiped out, so and so it got wiped out, it just went down to the per meeting of one twenty-five. They got a significant cut. And they got that below zoning board, I think zoning board has been at one fifty for a long time, I don't know.
Right, you don't know the exact date of the zoning board, I think that has been a hundred and fifty for a while, but as Supervisor Viviano said, the salary back and forth teacher landing mission was eliminated and that they were just kept at a hundred and twenty-five per meeting.
Mr. Chairman, does anyone recall why it was that down, what the rationale was?
I'll leave it to somebody who was here at the time to explain.
I think it's Viviano said, it was politically, and I'll leave it.
Former trustee, I believe it was motivated to make that.
And if anyone knows, what is comparable in zoning board appeals? Planning commission rates?
Okay, there is, Josh, there is, right? I don't know. I think every community would differ, some communities have, you know, one or two items every couple of months on an agenda. Whereas this community has often three or four items every other weekend on a agenda, so it's really hard to compare one community to another.
And so it's corrupt at this board since they're seated as never owned enough. Here I'll set. Is the only reason they're setting the rates to just make parity between two boards and are their functions and duties identically?
We're not changing any functions or duties.
I know, but the rationale seems to be raised, it's fair, yeah, for purposes of fairness. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, no questions.
Interesting. Any other discussion?
Hey, motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Judge Oliver, to approve the standing commission statement at a hundred and fifty dollars per meeting. Members please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item twenty-one is a request to approve the model permit for Downland Farms to East Site, Downland Farms East, Site House, which is located in the north corner of Wayne's Road and New Garfield, permanent parcel ID zero eight one nine four zero 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 one five. Motion to approve. Second. Spock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board, as you mentioned, Downland Farms East is at twenty-two mile on Garfield Road. This will largely be further up Garfield Road, it doesn't exist at this time. The site is already under construction, and they're seeking to have four models built for potential buyers in the in the development. Internal departments have reviewed this and are recommending approval.
Thank you, Mr. Spock. Any questions or discussion? Motion by Judge Alonzo, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the model permit, Downland Farms East, permanent parcel zero eight one nine four zero 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 one five. Members please vote. Motion passes unanimously. We have item twenty-two, it was a request to rezone from residential. This is one family urban to residential multiple family load density. Golden Creek, located on the south side of Twenty-four Mall Road, one quarter mile plus plus. Permanent parcel ID zero eight one six two zero 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 seven. Motion to approve. Support.
Spock. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. This site is located just south of twenty-four mile, but it is immediately adjacent to the landfill. They are seeking to change their zoning from single family to multi-family load density. This is something that matches the master plan, it went through the planning commission, was recommended for by unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Spock. Any discussion or questions? Motion by Judge Alonzo, supported by Judge Oliver, to approve the rezoning from residential on family urban to residential multiple or residential multiple family load density, Golden Creek, permanent parcel ID zero eight one six two zero 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 seven. Members please vote. Motion passes unanimously. We have item twenty-three, with another rezoning request, this one's from agricultural to residential, one family urban and from agricultural, from from agricultural resident, one family urban and agricultural. For Shaker Development, located in the northeast part of Twenty-three Mall Road and Carr, permanent parcel ID zero eight one four three zero 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 six. That's your motion. So. Or. Spock.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board, the next, this item as well as the next item are are related, they have the property is currently owned by the same family, they are seeking to sell off some of their farm property, which is currently is on agricultural, and the developer is seeking to split off this, the one for you right now, to a portion of it to our one single family homes. That is so that they can maintain a portion of that, to keep the family's farm operations on the actual corner of twenty-three and Carr Road. This was reviewed internally, and everyone recommended approval, wanted to plan a commission, and was recommended unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Spock. To Judge Alonzo, to approve the rezoning from agricultural to residential one family and agricultural. Permanent parcel zero eight one four three zero 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 six. Just vote. Motion passes unanimously. And then item twenty-four, which is a is a request for rezoning from agricultural to residential one family urban. The Shaker Development, located a half mile north of Twenty-three Mall Road on the east side of Carr Road, permanent parcel zero eight one four three zero 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 eight. You should. Support.
Spock. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board, as I mentioned, this is related to the previous item, same family owns the property, same development company, looking to develop property, this is the field that would be north of our water and sewer building. They are seeking to change the zoning from agricultural to our one single family. It did unanimously approve recommendations for approval from planning commission as well as internal departments.
Thank you, Mr. Spock. Any discussion or questions? Motion by Judge Alonzo, supported by Judge Oliver, to approve the rezoning from agricultural to one family urban, permanent parcel zero eight one four three zero 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 eight. Vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item twenty-five. Request to approve the scoreboard purchase for McComb Corners Park.
Motion to adjourn.
Support. Chicago.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, evening board members, Parks and Recreation Council is requesting permission to purchase six scoreboards at McComb Corners Park, which will be placed on all of the baseball softball. This time, we are recommending we purchase scoreboards from Daktronics. Quote for the scoreboards is three thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars per scoreboard, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars for shipping, for a total of twenty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Daktronics is a source wall provider, in addition to the negotiated price, Daktronics provided an additional discount, so it's better buying directly from them, the manufacturer. Included in the quote, the confirmation of process memo from the purchasing specialist, this is a budgeted item, I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Carl. So this is continuation of our budgeted one hundred dollars improvements to the park. Sorry, it's gonna include, this is part of the million dollars.
That's correct.
And then just everyone understands, this is just the purchase of the scoreboards. Mr. Carl, and it's gonna be sending out our P for the electrical part of the installation, we'll be seeing if we get one that comes in.
That's correct. Mr. Chairman, through you, Mr. Carl, do you anticipate there potentially being an opportunity to recruit some money from advertising on the scoreboard?
Well, we're gonna look for sponsorship for it, of course. Well, we're gonna put the money up up upfront to purchase it, but yeah, we'll put some of that.
Do that. Okay.
Great. Ask your friend. I had one.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay. Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Judge Lucino, to approve the scoreboard purchase from McComb Corners Park. Members please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Carl. Moving on to item twenty-six, is a request to schedule a public hearing for a tax abatement for Allied Photochemical located at one six oh two four Leoni Drive. Motion. So.
Second.
This one's pretty self-explanatory, is there any discussion or questions?
Public hearing will be scheduled for August eighth, August tenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Mr. Chairman, we've gone through this progression with this particular parcel. Same one on Leoni Drive.
We believe so, yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, more discussion. Motion by Judge Oliver, supported by Clerk Posey, schedule a public hearing for a tax abatement for Allied Photochemical located at one six oh two four Leoni Drive. Members please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Last item on the agenda for today is to request to authorize the supervisor to sign an agreement with Nancy McCollum Foundation. Motion to approve. Support. So as described in the work packet, this is an agreement with five oh one C three organization. In our efforts to solicit additional funds for parks and rec services and projects and improvements, we've been asked by at least one corporate potential corporate sponsor to put in place a five oh one C three organization to serve as a pass-through, as part of their corporate policy. Talked to Nancy McCollum, serves this function throughout the home county. Talked to Nancy McComb, serves this function throughout home county. And very willing to do it. This is the agreement in place. Five percent. Team to them, five percent of whatever passes through them. Pretty straightforward.
Mr. Chairman, so there's no other obligation by the township of the move five percent fee?
That is correct. We did negotiate our memo, originally requested. Discuss it with them and their wanted just to stream five percent.
So for instance, um, Pittsburgh Park, although that park, we have, uh, sold off properties that will find. With the property as the site plan has been presented to date, this would allow us, uh, where there's space available at that park to add additional amenities which are sponsored through this fable, I mean.
Correct, correct. So far, um, we have applied to go five thousand dollars to go toward the general park. Right, right, general park sponsorship activities, but we're in discussions with that to potentially add additional interest to Pittsburgh Park. Um, those conversations are out of the way.
Mr. Chairman. Time I, I believe that we, the contract was initially proposed in the one they're reporting on today, and changed a little bit as well, so that. We can solicit funds for parks and recreation in general, not specifically just.
Correct.
Thank you.
So just, just to follow up, so somebody wanted to do something in corners.
They could, right.
Or provide them with a tax deductible donation.
So is it some organization, some private, we went through something similar with, actually, the donation of the property. So they wanted to make sure it was tax deductible, so they went through the proper process to die or else. This, and working was an established organization that handles this, has the five oh one C three accreditation. Gives us the ability to, um, talk to those potential donors and sponsors who wish to open test of a five oh one C.
Well, most of your donors. When they get some certain amount of money, they don't want to do nothing but, like, they, they don't get involved.
We get, we get, we have some very generous donors who get to do this directly, but this gives us some flexibility to go after one.
I think it's good.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions. Yeah, the chairman can. My position on this is why isn't home township foundation being created? A nonprofit corporation, and, uh, that's just a fine state of Michigan. And whether or not we can do it ourselves, save the five percent, I understand the earth being in all that. And good, because they're already established. It's. Fancy.
Nancy McComb, yes.
Each be, leaders, ears, Nancy McComb, I believe. But a question to the chairman general counsel. How complex or difficulties to achieve five oh one C three status, if you know, if you don't?
Well, I've done it for the Tripoli Valley Education Foundation, you have biologists, you have, uh, articles in corporation. Uh, and you have, so that IRS people, that's most difficult. Uh, it takes some time, there's no question about it. If the township want to look, in future to do it, it's going to take us a little time to get through that process, you have to stretch forward. And how long it will be processed, so, so, stat quick.
Tell, tell me if I'm wrong, but I looked into this a little bit too, because I had a similar thought, because I had, uh. Heard of, like, Kent Township, as the friends of Kent Township, they're doing slash pad, and so I started looking to it. Uh, my understanding is that five oh one C three can have no association with municipal, so. Board has to be completely independent, there'd be no representation for township, they're their own group. That's correct, that's. So, to get encouraged, uh, remember, you know, interested residents or one, aren't we have, and work with us on it. I don't think we can take an active role in action forming. That's correct.
And, Mr. Chairman, I understand that the term, uh, from December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, to two thousand twenty-three.
Correct.
I just might believe we should be more in that direction. Five percent is five percent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Justin, as well. Mr. Chairman. If I may, at one point, I established a five oh one C three organization in different life. Uh, and one of the challenges was leading to the IRS to approve it, which in many cases would take nine, ten months. And, uh, we were told by essentially the IRS, that you can solicit funds while pending. But that if you later were not approved by IRS, you have to, the organization don't have to pay taxes during donations. That was discouraging to some donors, like, well, I mean, I can donate, but it hasn't been approved yet, and nine, ten months from now, they tell me I have to pay taxes on it, or I can't get money back. So there's a gap wait period of nine, ten months too, that is part of the process, at least it wasn't at that time. So, yeah, there's, uh, there's positive negatives of setting one of those things up. Any other questions?
Well, Mr. Chairman, my understanding that, I vote yes for this, it will be through two thousand twenty-three, and. For the same reason, Tripoli Valley School. Foundation, whatever the title they give that organization. Um, and Community College Foundation, which I have experience with. Uh, enjoying themselves. Would be. Now, we're not binding ourselves, pursuing into this.
No, I, I think if another organization presented itself that wanted to do this, no charge, that we've been used and understood this process, that we must. There's no, there's no requirements, reason that we use them as the only best recommendation.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It's an important point of the business, Chairman, that if there's a donor that wants to contribute, and doesn't care about some free status or that, they can, they don't have to go through things in the common, they can just donate directly to the state department. In that case, it's those people that insist that there be a five oh one C three in place.
Correct. Question? Motion by Judge, supported by trustee Lucino, to authorize supervisor to sign an agreement with Nancy McComb Foundation, opposing the call roll.
Yes, Supervisor, Chair Joe La.
Yes.
Trustee Lucino?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
For both the yes, Supervisor Viviano?
Yes.
That resolution is accepted.
Moving on to public comment. Uh, for non-agenda items, anyone who should make a public comment, maybe, maybe there are ways in the microphone where you can say it. Uh, anyone who's stating a replay, they need to, they raise their hand. Mr. Chairman, President, Mayor Moulton.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Moulton, moving on. Two board comments. Just one, I want to congratulate, uh, Mr. Lepary to her new position. Look forward to working with another great staff, I don't know if we already have. That's country. Thank you, trustee Lucino. Trustee Nevers.
Actually, I will agree with Mr. Lucino in congratulating the new hire, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, just Nevers. Trustee Oliver, same thing, congrats, welcome. Uh, another quick comment I'd like to make, make this quick. Uh, there was a rescue at a restaurant in our community. And it, it sounded like the young lady jumped, they actually gave CPR. Pretty crazy. They called the chief, they'd be nice, and they're looking into finding the person, and then you wrecked one still first. And they'd be great, it was McCollum County resident. Yeah, it was nice to see that, uh. People do jump in and help other people. A lot of times, uh, they weren't scared to do anything, but, uh. It was nice to see that and hear about that, so, maybe we can find her and recognize you.
We're happy.
Thanks, and that's it.
Thank you, trustee Oliver. Trustee, who's on?
No comments, same, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Trustee, please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, just a couple of long comment, I mean, quick comments. Uh, one. It seems like we're oftentimes at the whim of the Great Lakes Water Authority when it comes to the rates being assessed, and that's, I think, the raw case, because. They're the only, the only providers of water, but, uh, there's a number of factors that went into. What being done tonight, with the guarantee of another zero percent increase in water, so it's the second zero percent increase in well. And I think our residents will especially appreciate that in the current economic times, when their. Gas prices are going up twenty-five percent, and food prices are going up eleven, twelve percent, everything's going through the loop. Uh, and some of the fact that we haven't been able to, we, we've been afford, we've been able to not pass on any increases as a result of. Things like projects, capital projects being pushed in the future that have exposed to COVID, but some of it was the actions by our board and by our, our department. And, uh, I want to just thank you, which we thank our department for the work that they put in, or for the consultants to do everything they can to make sure we have. Minimal rate increases or no rate increases, in this case, and express that appreciation. Appreciate, appreciate the actions in sport too, that stood up and said that we will not be, we're putting an escrow, not be paying for Highland Park's water debt. Uh, and they have to, we're not, just simply not do that. I'm sure that played some role, not just us, but the communities that stood up and refused to, uh, continue to make that payment. Uh, played some role in the Great Lakes Water Authority backing off, and, and eliminating that part of the income that we're tending to pass along. So I think we all deserve a pat on the back, our department that surround me, can use and join us in that sort of protest. This board here, and I'm just very pleased that we can do something, anything, to not raise rates and prices on the residents, to do something.
Say. Here, here, a few more thoughts. Thank you, Judge. Judge Posy.
Uh, just again, congratulating, uh, Ms. Lepary. I'm looking forward to working with her in the finance department. Uh, I know that department has been diligently working through being shorthanded, so her, uh, start date is anticipated there, greatly. Uh, just some voter information, uh, to date, we have mailed out thirteen thousand two hundred and twenty-three absentee voter ballots. And we have received back four thousand two hundred and eighty-five, so we're at about a thirty-two percent return. I just want to encourage those who have requested an absentee ballot, to please, um, return it to, uh, the clerk's office, you can do that, uh, by mail, you can drop it off at the office, or one of our. Uh, three drive, uh, ballot box locations, but reminder, you must return the ballot by eight P M. on election day. We are now less than three weeks away, so, um, we appreciate you returning the ballot as soon as possible. Um, some, some more voter clarification, if you plan to vote in person at polls on Tuesday, August second. Please verify your polling location prior to, um, going to vote that day. We did send out new voter identification cards. Important information has changed, your, um, districts have changed. So those that you may have supported in the past are now no longer in your district, so please be aware of those changes. Um, also, we have several different, uh, tools on our website that you can verify your polling location. Unfortunately, this is inconvenient to some voters when their lo- location does get changed. We were, um, we had to real allocate our resources to redistricting. We combined our precincts into polling locations, so we can house more precincts and more location. If this is an extreme inconvenience to any voter, uh, please contact our office, and we will assist you in the best way possible. So again, community assistance with your voting needs, please contact the office, we'll be here to help you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Judge Posy. Um, I even want to say a few things. I want to thank Mr. Carroll and his staff for making some progress on our. Wish list of the park improvements, uh, anyone who's been in the parks lately may have noticed a few. Uh, Waldenberg is starting, got started to receive a bit of a facelift, the swing set is getting a ton of use, it's nice to see. That's nice, the dress is straight. Uh, I want to remind everybody that we have Patrick's in the parks still going on all of this month, every Thursday, so it's not like it's come off the. Home quarters, or the, we catch her at seven P M. Uh, I also want to congratulate, uh, Ms. Lepary, uh, her new position, looking forward to finally having a full staff, I'm sure Stacy is more excited than anybody. Um, I also want to congratulate Treasurer Gillette for his recent appointment to, as we begin, uh, home county art authority, home county art authority, pending tomorrow's, for the committee of, uh, the. Looking forward to what Viviano can do for us, uh, on the art floor. And lastly, I just do want to mention the water rates. Uh, I want to thank, uh, my fellow board members. And for showing some resolve, that we're not going to just be beholden to everything that is, uh, the Great Lakes Water Authority dictates to us. Uh, same goes for other municipal leaders that stood with us, especially our county leadership, that led the charge and put the pressure on Highland Park. And Great Lakes Water Authority to begin to resolve the problem there. I don't think that's quite over, but. Uh, with basic fish rights, so, good job to everybody on that topic. With that, is there a motion to adjourn? Discussion. Motion by Judge, plus for, Mr. Chairman, to adjourn the meeting, and I'm just going to vote. As the A M S leads meeting in adjourn.